Live at seven o'clock, which had just turned, so hopefully this.
Yeah.
Now the mics just got turned on. We're all good. The only thing is that that screen's not like there should be something on there, but there isn't.
Well, can we start if John's like?
John, John is watching the meeting. He can hear.
Okay.
All right, so we don't need to see him. Good evening and welcome to the June 23rd, 2025 zoning board of appeal meeting. I would like to begin tonight by welcoming the new members, our new members to the zoning board. They were recently approved by the select board and sworn in by the town clerk. To my far left, I have Chris Stambowski, and to my far right, I have Kevin Beridge. I would also like to introduce you to the rest of the board. To my right is our clerk, Ken Scholes. To my left is member Ken Jarvanen. On the other side of Ken is Becky Kilborn, and zooming in tonight is John Bounner from, and I'm the chair. My name is Corinne Doherty. From our planning department, we have our planning director, Brian Zickelli. I just want to give you, people in the audience, some rules for the evening. When the clerk reads your application, whoever is speaking on your behalf, whether it's the applicant or someone on their behalf, please proceed to the podium and introduce yourself, provide us with the specifics of your application. After that, we will go to the board for questions, and after that, we will go out to the audience members and people who are on Zoom if they have questions or comments. I do ask because I see that we have some audience members tonight. If you want to speak when it comes to the audience participation, please raise your hand. I will ask if anyone wants to speak, and when I call on you, please proceed to the podium. Please give your name and your address, and then you can ask your question or provide your comment. Please don't yell from your seats, and please don't talk over anybody else while they are speaking. So with that, I am also going to ask anybody who's in attendance if you could silence your cell phones so that it wouldn't, it won't be a distraction this evening. So with that, zoning board members, we are in possession of minutes from the June 9th, 2025 meeting. Do we have any comments or edits? I believe Becky had one edit.
We made that edit.
It's outside?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was John.
That was John. Okay, so everyone's in favor. Okay, Mr. Clerk, if you could read the first case.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first case is 184 Center Street. This is zoned R3. Request an appeal from a decision by the zoning enforcement officer that all commercial kennel operations must cease at this residential address, as such operations are not allowed in any residential zones. The request is made by Melissa Nardone, docket 25-5103.
If you could go to the podium, that would be great. I also want to say before we received multiple letters, I believe approximately eight, or was it nine?
Another one, so nine.
Okay, nine letters. We're not going to read them all into the record, but we are aware that there are a lot of people who are in favor of your application, and they will be part of the record. We're just not going to read all nine of them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you can begin.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Nardone, and I live at 184 Center Street in Danvers. I'm here tonight to respectfully appeal the cease and desist order issued against my small and home doggy daycare, and to ask this board to reverse the zoning interpretation on which that order is based. For more than 10 years, I have quietly and responsibly operated this from my home as a single mother, supporting both myself and my daughter. I was unaware I was in violation of zoning bylaws, and during that time, there has been no formal complaints about noise, traffic, or neighborhood disruption. The only issue ever raised was an anonymous report in 2022. Out of respect for the process, I paused operations temporarily. Recently, after a picture was posted of some dogs on Facebook, Brian Zickelli sent me another letter stating I had another anonymous complaint for the same reason, zoning. This is not a large-scale facility. I care for a few dogs at a time in a clean, calm, home-based setting. My clients, many of whom live right here in Danvers, rely on me to provide safe, structured, and individualized care. I personally handle nearly all pickups and drop-offs, and my service does not increase street traffic. In fact, people often use my driveway to turn around. I am not asking for special treatment. I am asking for fair consideration based on the character of my neighborhood. Key facts in my neighborhood, while my property is considered zoning three?
Yes.
It is surrounded by commercial activity. I live less than 500 feet from Route 1, a major commercial corridor. The closest business and residence located at 168 and 168R Center Street are just 350 and 250 feet away from my driveway. A hotel and shopping plaza are located at the end of my street. I have a bright commercial light that shines directly into my bedroom window at night at 168. My street function as a connector between Route 1 and Route 114 is consistent with traffic daily. This is not a secluded residential enclave. It is a transitional mixed-use area. My home-based pet care service aligns with that reality. I specifically asked this board to reverse the interpretation that my small pet care operation constitutes a prohibited commercial use, and instead to recognize that under the specific conditions of my property and neighborhood, this use is both reasonable and compatible. What I have been doing has allowed me as a single mother to remain financially independent while serving the Danvers community for over a decade. I am simply asking for an opportunity to continue doing so legally, respectfully, and with the same care and responsibility I have shown all these years. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to, I'm going to ask the board members if they have any questions for you. John, why don't we start with you, if that's okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, I'd actually like to start with Mr. Zickelli. I just would like a clarification. The applicant said they were R2, R3. I just want to be clear. Are they zoned R2 or R3?
They're R3. There is a error in the agenda. It is squarely in the R3.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Nardone, I guess, although I read your narrative, and I admire your ability to run this business, I guess for a decade now, I'm trying to understand, have you ever pursued, you know, a commercial-type facility that's not in a residential neighborhood as part of running this business?
No, I haven't. I wasn't intending of having a commercial facility. The point of my business was so people had a private comforting home to bring their dogs, because not a lot of dogs do like to go to large facilities that have over 60 dogs. I have dogs who are anxious. I have dogs who need medication. I've taken care of some sick dogs. I only have a few dogs at a time, so it's quiet, not stressful for these animals that I've been caring for.
Yeah, I guess I'm not really asking about a large facility. I'm just asking, have you entertained or looked at any other facility beside your home?
Not yet. No, I have not, because.
Okay. And again, I did read your narrative. I guess I just, you know, we're in a situation here where we're bound by the bylaw, and I don't see where the town erred in issuing this cease and desist. So maybe you could expand on that a little bit. Why do you think this zoning shouldn't apply to you? I mean, you are in a residential neighborhood.
Yeah, I've resided here for 47 years, and the area I live in is not a traditional residential neighborhood like in Woodville or by the prep or in small areas by the high school, where I know there are many other people that do the same exact thing as I do. I literally live feet from a highway. The traffic is ridiculous in my neighborhood. It's not like a quiet area at all. People that live around me don't even know that I have dogs at my house. I don't cause any disruption. It's not the typical neighborhood, and that's the reason why I'm here, to try to see if you can consider just letting me continue what I'm doing since the highway corridor is one house over from my house, and I can see two large commercial businesses directly from my driveway as well.
Yeah, I can understand that. I guess expand upon a little bit. You talked about an anonymous complaint. What was the complaint in 2022?
Zoning.
So that came to you, or did that come into the town?
I got the letter from Brian Zickelli, I believe, and I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your name perfectly.
No, no, you are. Zickelli's right, but it was just a different Brian. It was Brian.
Oh, it was a different Brian. Okay, so I'm not sure who the Brian was in 2022, but I went.
Our enforcement officer, Brian Kenson.
And I talked to him, and I asked if he could allow me to get a kennel license and everything, and I was just trying to do the right thing. I shut down operation for a little while, but it is my main source of income that supports me and my daughter, and considering I caused no actual harm, or there wasn't an actual complaint on my behalf or on the care of my dogs, I continued walking dogs and then bringing them back to my house a couple at a time, and due to a.
Okay, I think I understand where you're going. So, Madam Chair, through you to Brian. Brian, do we have a quantity or a count, or if any other dog kennels of this type operate in residential neighborhoods in the town of Danvers?
No, we do not. So basically, the way that.
We don't have a, we don't have a count, or we don't have any?
No, no, we don't have, so we don't go around looking for people that are having kennels in their house in residential areas. That's not how we enforce any of this. So however, when someone does bring a complaint, and this was one complaint, to be clear, it was one complaint, not that there was a complaint about the care of the animals. By the way, I don't think I've ever gotten so many neighborhood positive letters, just so you're clear. This is, no one's trying to attack the business. It's based on the bylaw. Somebody, so then, when, when a complaint is, is issued to us, we have to investigate. What we found from online and from site visits from the public way was it's very clear that there's a business being run here. So then we said, okay, you can't do this. But, and the same thing will happen. Maybe this will alert others who are having doggy daycares in residential neighborhoods that if it's over more than four dogs, they are not allowed. So that, that is what the bylaw is. We have the ability to change the bylaw at town meeting. Town meeting can do that, but right now, we mimic the state law of a kennel, which is a pack of more than four dogs. So you can have a personal kennel, meaning if you have more than four dogs of your own, you can have that in a residential neighborhood, but you cannot have other people's dogs, more than four dogs, in your home as in a resident, or not in a residential neighborhood, in a, in a zone that is zoned residential. So.
Okay, I think that answers it for me. And I just have one other question. Ms. Nardone, have you considered reducing your operation to what would comply, which I think I heard Brian right, would be no more than four dogs?
Absolutely. I've never had site visits at my home either. I heard you say that. I don't know.
It was a simple drive-by.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I've offered to have people come to my house when this first happened to, just so they can see, and I didn't get any.
Okay, thanks, Madam Chair. I'll yield, and I'll hold any questions for later. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know.
Oh.
The rest of us get to ask questions, too.
Okay.
Kevin, would you like to ask a few questions or a question?
Sure. I guess, can you tell me a little bit more about the nature of the business? Because I'm just trying to distinguish kennel from pet daycare, which are separate items under the table of allowable uses. So do you offer overnight boarding for dogs at your home, or is it strictly daycare?
I have been so, during the day, I have a couple dogs. I've had up to six dogs from 11 to 1 o'clock, and then I do board a few dogs at night as well. I wasn't aware, I wasn't supposed to do any of this. And then the dogs I do come, I have a couple that will come for a full day, and I usually pick them up and drop them off. So that's basically how I've been running. I also go to other people's houses to do visits as well. So the most dogs I've had at my house at one period of time was six.
And, thank you. And.
And I don't use kennels. It's more of a pet sitting service.
I understand.
Okay.
So either way, a commercial-style kennel, regardless of, I mean, I guess technically if it's less than four dogs, it's not considered a kennel at all.
Sure.
It has to get to four dogs to be even a personal kennel or, or a commercial kennel. So even if you're going to do more than four dogs as yourself, that's just yours, you actually need to, look here, a special permit with the ZBA in any of the residential districts. So it used to be five dogs. If you were doing five dogs, you needed a special permit. Now it's four. But anyway, the point is, is that if you have any more than four dogs, no matter what, if it's yours or not, you need something from the ZBA, or it's not allowed.
And so it almost seems to me like you're asking for two different types of relief at the same time, no?
There's no relief.
Well, I.
This is an interesting, yeah.
Madam, Madam Chair, point of order. She's not looking for relief. She's appealing a decision. So she's not in here for an application for a special permit.
So that's, that's what I'm, that's the point I'm getting at. So I heard the applicant say special permit, but that's not actually the purpose of this. It is to determine whether the zoning enforcement officer was correct or not.
Correct. So, so we issued a letter saying that you can't operate a commercial kennel because it's not allowed in a residential zone. Then we gave her the opportunity. She's like, well, what can I do to potentially appeal this decision? And we're like, well, you can't apply to become a commercial kennel, but you, the only, the only opportunity you have is to appeal the decision to the ZBA, saying that we acted somehow inappropriately in applying the law. She decided to exercise that right, and that's why she's here.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any further questions, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in 2022, when the letter came to you to cease and desist, was it because you had more than four dogs there?
At the time, I would have sometimes three dogs, four dogs, no more than six dogs. And then I got that letter, and was totally blown away by that. I spoke with the Brian at the time and asked what there was, anything I can do if I can apply for a kennel or a special permit or something, just to continue operations, and the answer was no. So then for a while, I kept it under four dogs, and then, you know, I had a picture of a few dogs over the beginning of the spring, and there was probably like six or seven. And then I got a letter again from Brian.
Right. So, Madam Chair, through you, Brian, she kept it at a four-dog maximum. She'd be fine.
According to the state, technically, it is not, it's not even a personal kennel. It's not a kennel.
Would that be something you could take as, as a?
It's not, it's not a condition. There's no decision. It's in terms of if, if that's what she's going to do. Again, this decision, sorry, I don't usually speak this much, but this is not a typical application. This is an appeal. This is not relief that she's asking for.
Right.
I just want to make that clear.
Technically, I'm asking if I could just be considered part of.
That zone.
A special, I mean, I asked for a special, I got, I asked for a special permit. I got a no. I have a highway corridor house. Literally, I can walk over from my backyard, and she's considered the highway corridor two houses over. My neighbor across the street lives directly next door to the Hancock Building, that you can see these massive buildings from my house. I can see Route 1, and you can see the plaza on Center Street.
Right, we get that. But the thing is, is.
My area is not residentialized.
We can't change the zoning. So just because you're on the border of, say, industrial, you're still zoned in R3, like Mr. Bounner said, and it's not allowed in our, any of the residential zones. I guess that's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Ken.
So are the dogs mostly inside, or are they outside?
I have a fully fenced-in backyard. They're in and out all day. My house is connected right to the outside, so they have the free range to come in and out, and I'm with them all day.
And you have a fairly large backyard as well. So that's totally fenced in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have no other questions.
Becky.
I just liked a clarification. I, we have the deed for the property. It's submitted as part of the application with Paul and Sandra Miller, but your name is Melissa Nardone. So are you a tenant there, or?
It's my house and my father, Paul Miller's house. My mom passed away, so the house is mine. It's going to be passed down, but that deed, I believe, is when my mom was still alive, because they both signed that. But he's 90 years old, and he couldn't be here.
So you legally own the house?
Yes, me and my father.
Okay.
It's under trust, Becky.
Yeah, it's under trust, and she's the beneficiary.
Okay, okay. I just want a clarification, because you're talking about it as your house, and.
It, yes, it is my house.
Okay, all right.
Just looking at the owner of record and if.
Yeah, my name's not on that, and it's my mom and dad.
Okay, all right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Chris.
I'm all set. No questions. Thank you.
Okay. I, I have a few questions, but let me start with Mr. Zickelli first. So they're here, obviously, because of an enforcement order. So the only thing we can really say is we agree with the enforcement order, or we don't. But, but on the flip side, if, if four, over four is that magic number, whether she has a business or whether she has a personal kennel. So in a residential zone, you can have a personal kennel, but they're, they're all your dogs. They're not, it's not a business, and people aren't bringing dogs to your home. And in a residential, we couldn't give you a special permit for you to be able to conduct a business. But from what I gather, Brian, you were saying earlier, if she, if we say, no, the enforcement officer was right, because he is right, but then you conduct your business and, and you don't schedule four dogs at any given time, then you're in compliance. Does that make sense?
So I have the definition that we use, as well as the state, with the umbrella definition of kennel is a pack of dogs that's four or more. Then there's different types of kennels, personal kennel, commercial kennel. So, correct. If it's four dogs or less, we're not here. It's not anything. It's not a kennel. It's not anything.
So.
The, the only issue is that what's also started, started this was a potential business certificate. If there's licensure involved or anything like that, or, you know, insurance, you know, anything like that, like that, you know, through the Board of Health, you know, that, not our business, to be honest. I mean, that's their department. But technically, if it's four or less, it's, it's not a kennel.
Okay. So it, it looks as if we might have a solution to this problem if you agree or, or, again, we're going to have to, at least I'm going to have to vote to, to enforce, because, you know, we're the zoning board. You come to us if you have an issue, but we have to enforce our zoning bylaws. And if we, we can't change zoning either, that's something that has to go through town meeting. Now, have there been, have there been times when a particular applicant has come in and, you know, they've kind of begun the process of changing our zoning for their specific situation? Yes, that has happened. But that's not something that can happen immediately, and I'm not sure, even in this situation, that it would happen, right? Because we're really trying to prevent businesses in the middle of like a residential area. And I understand yours is kind of quasi-residential because you are residential, but you will buy all of these other commercial zoned properties. So, again, the way I am going to vote is that I am going to vote to enforce it, but as Mr. Zickelli said, if you schedule your dogs so that you do not have more than four at one time, then the town is not involved in this business. Does that make sense?
Well, no, 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 I would say the, as far as zoning is concerned.
Well, as far as zoning, as far as, right, as far as, you know, conducting a business, and what you, what did you say, Brian? Like obtaining a business certificate?
Health Department.
The Health Department, all of that. They could be involved.
I wouldn't even, I would just rule on what's happening.
Oh, no, that's what, we're just going to rule on what's happening, and then it's up, then it's up to the applicant to do, you know.
Well, I just don't want to say that, yeah, they can operate, and then the Board of Health goes in there and says, no, they can't.
Yeah.
So I'm just not comfortable. So I'm just not comfortable saying, yeah, of course, you can operate. From a zoning perspective, I know that you can't.
Okay. But we don't, like, the zoning board, we're only going to rule on the zoning aspect of it.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, questions, comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joanne Rigucci, Town Meeting Member, precinct two. I have a couple of questions. One question is, I guess it came up, the question was slightly answered, was no one from zoning ever visited the home, as to see how many dogs were on site. I know the applicant already said so, but no one has seen the setup from zoning at all, correct?
Well, we have-
Madam Chair?
Um, well-
Has anyone visited inside the home to see what the dogs there and to see what it looked like?
That's not our job.
Well, my question is, is that what bothers me about this whole process, and whether it's the law or not, I'm not going to get into the law, it's the appearance that, on the town, is that it's a bit of an overreach.
Okay.
Brian, please yield the floor to me and stop with the remarks, or I will ask the Madam Chair to ask you to leave the meeting.
That's hilarious.
I will not.
I don't want, I don't want any outbursts.
I don't, but I don't want him outbursting to me either. I'm, the questions are coming through you. I have the floor. I don't want any remarks.
Would you like me to-
Please, Madam Chair.
Yes, would you like-
And you can ask him to not do that.
Everybody, please, calm down.
Thank you. I, I-
Can I answer your question, though?
Yes, yes.
Typically, what happens is a complaint will come in, and they, complaints come in through various departments in various ways. Usually, whoever receives the letter or the complaint, it's assigned to Brian Cassidy. Mr. Cassidy goes to investigate. In this situation, he didn't go out to investigate. He didn't have the Board of Health go out to investigate, because this is something that's prohibited in that zone. That's why they sent the letter way back in, I believe, Brian, it was 2022.
2022 said, please stop. If, if you're, he said, if you're operating a kennel.
Right.
Please stop. If you, if you're not operating a kennel, and it's a personal kennel, please apply for a special permit.
Right. So, so there's no need to go out and investigate, because either it was commercial, and it's prohibited, or it was personal, and then she would apply for the special permit, and then we would go out as members of the board as part of our, like, preparation for each one of these meetings. But I have to tell you, I, I'm an attorney. I deal with compliance issues in all cities and towns.
Mm-hmm.
And Brian Cassidy is one of the best.
That's fine. That was my question. That was my question, and you answered it. Thank you. According to the town zoning laws or bylaws, how many children define a daycare?
I would have to look it up.
An in-home daycare?
We, we don't define that. That's done by the state in terms of what an in-
How many children define it? Can you look up, can we look up that law, Madam Chair?
It's irrelevant.
Oh.
No, it's not, not to my argument.
Then you can look it up.
Not, not to my argument that I'm going to make.
Well, why, why don't you make your argument?
So my argument is, is that there are mothers that we know, and that we've known over the years, who might have a couple of children of their friends or family, and they may or may not get paid for, and bring them into their home and care for them during working hours, or have them overnight, and provide this care for them, specialized care. And I think it's a little bit of an overreach by the town by one anonymous complaint, where no one can go out and see what's going on because of the laws. And it can almost seem like, to me, where this person is not making themselves known, and not publicly complaining about it, it's almost like the town and their by, and our bylaws are being used to bully this resident with just having a couple or a few dogs at her house and caring for them. Now, if the town is not aware of someone having a bunch of children at their house, which I know of a house that does it, and it's set up.
Six or less.
Thank you very much. So that's my point, is that I think it's, I think it's a very dangerous thing that this complainant has put the, has put the town in a dangerous position, because it's almost like a bullying situation. You know, I think, no, I think so. And it, it might be a personal vendetta, and they're using the town zoning laws to, to, to do this to somebody. And I don't know. This is the way I'm seeing it. And I think, you know, we, we don't want to have spot zoning in this town. Well, we don't have want, want spot enforcement in this town either. Because I have been in very many situations as a Town Meeting Member complaining about bylaw violations to different departments, including our police department, and I've been told, we're not doing it. I don't want to get sued. And I can give many examples, but I won't, because that's not this board's job. So I know what the laws are, and I know what you're sworn to do, but I think this is something that should have never come to this situation, and I think that maybe we should change the zoning laws in order for someone and the laws to not be used to picket somebody. And I think that's what this situation is. I don't, I do not think anything else, whether it's the law or not. I, I don't want to argue the law. I'm getting down to a personal level of somebody living in the privacy of their own home, and they bring a dog into their home, or a couple little dogs, and she takes care of them for the day. And I think it's a big overreach by the town. And whether it's the law or not.
Did she identify?
You know?
Yes, she did.
So.
Again, you know, we can't get a, we can't go down to the personal level. We're here just to interpret and enforce the laws.
Exactly. I understand that. But on the flip side of that, I want the board to know that, that it's, it's harassing this lady, who's a resident, who's a taxpayer. So has the person, do we know who made the complaint? Do we have that on record in the town?
Um, I believe we do.
Okay, okay.
If, the only time, it's, it's not, is when, if it's a phone call, but I believe we, we do have it.
So they made a written, formal complaint, or do they just call?
Uh, no, it was, it was not, I don't believe it was a call.
Okay.
It certainly, yeah.
Okay. I'd like to know that, too.
But, I mean, obviously, but she wants to operate, so it's, it's obvious that, that-
I think she should.
Yeah.
I think she should. I think, I think it's over, I think it's overreaching. I think it's overreaching.
The law.
Because if someone has less, if they have more than six children in their house, and they're not signed up as a daycare, or they have less, and this same complaint comes in, you don't have it on the, you guys don't even know what the law is. You know, this is my point, is that I, I just think it's, I think it's harassment, and I don't like it. The other thing that I'd like the zoning board to note, and for the zoning enforcement officer to note, is that this resident did complain about 168 Center Street. The lights need to be addressed if they're shining in her, in a residence's windows. So I'd like to have a report back on that in 30 days, that this has been fixed by 168 Center Street. Let's enforce that.
What, which lighting bylaw would you like me to enforce that did not get passed?
I don't know, Brian. I don't have a copy of the bylaws in front of me.
It didn't get passed, so I can't.
Well, it's a nuisance to this resident, and we need to address that for 168 Center Street, that they're, they're a nuisance to, to the residential neighborhood that they abut.
I, I believe, Brian, um-
So let's note that.
Excuse me. There, there is an online form to file a complaint for any type of zoning. So anybody is, is able to do it. You can just go to the town website and fill in the form, and you hit submit, and then it goes to the department, who should be investigating this, and then they'll come out and take a look.
Okay.
Just a point of information, Madam Chair. I believe John got kicked off the-
Oh. All right, well, thank you.
And just my last remark. I don't want to take up all the time of the board, but I do hope the zoning board votes in favor of Melissa. I don't like to see anyone's spirit be broken, whether it's the law or not. I think it's, I think there's bigger fish to fry in this town, other than, you know, someone who's taking care of three or four dogs in their house, and that someone has a bone to pick with someone who is as kind as her. And I think that your, our zoning laws, again, are being used. I think the town is being used to bully her. So I don't like seeing that. And that's who the board should stand up for. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? The woman in the blue shirt.
Hello, I'm Susan Berry. I live at 189 Center Street. I've lived there all my life, and that's a long time. I've lived next door to 180 for as long as she's been alive. So I'm very familiar with that neighborhood and what's going on there and whatever. I guess, couple things. I'm, I'm a little confused. I came here not knowing anything, really, and I'm learning a lot sitting here. And one thing is, now, you can have as many dogs as you want, as long as you're not taking money.
No, you still need a special permit over four.
Right. You're, okay, that, so that's-
But, but they have to be, if, if you're in a residential zone, they have to be your dogs.
Okay.
And we have had people come in, for whatever reason, they have five kids, all their kids want their own dogs, one's a comfort dog, one's this, one's that.
Yeah.
So if it's residential, and it's over four, you come in for a permit, a special permit, but they have to be your dogs.
Okay. I didn't realize that. I don't have any dogs. I'm a cat person. But anyway, I, I've watched Melissa and what she's done. I, I live directly across the street. I, my house is looking right at her house. I never see much traffic. I'd even know, wouldn't even know. I see her go in and out, but I don't see other people coming in and out. I don't, I don't hear dogs. I hear my other neighbor's dogs, but I don't hear her dogs. I, I don't see how it's a big deal, other than there's a zone, it's residential three. I understand that. It's a law. Now, my next question is, if you get an anonymous tip, so to speak, and you don't follow up on it, Brian, how do you know it's true?
We did follow up. We did a, so-
I thought you said you don't investigate.
We did not inspect the house. We're not going, you know, we, we do everything from the public way, so-
So how did you investigate, how did you know this?
Uh, Mr. Cassidy drove by the house. Uh, you could, the, the whole yard is fenced in. They saw some dogs. They didn't know exactly what was happening.
[laughing]
Either, either, either way, he didn't, he didn't even, just, please.
[inaudible]
Okay. So Mr. Cassidy said-
Never know there was a dog going-
Mr. Cassidy said, if you ha, he didn't even accuse you. He said, if you have more than four dogs, the first letter from 2022, we can bring it up. If you have more dog, four than dog, more than four dogs that are your own, we weren't even saying you were running a kennel, meaning running a commercial business. It was an anonymous tip. We did not know exactly what it was. We sent a letter. We said, hey, if these are your dogs, you're good. If you're more than four, you need to come in. This is what the letter said. Even then they said, if you're going, if you actually are running a business, you have to stop that, because you're not allowed to do it. So that was the first letter in 2022, where we didn't know exactly what was going on. It was, it was a letter saying, from what we could tell, from the road.
Okay. All right.
How did you get that letter? Not at all. I got a letter saying-
From 2022?
You must cease and desist all kennel, your business. There was nothing about anyone seeing anything from the road. There was nothing about coming in, talking.
Madam Chair, if you could have whoever's speaking go to the microphone, please.
It's, the letter's in your packet.
Um, could you go to the, could you please go to the microphone?
I'm not quite done.
Okay, you can step aside. She'll speak, and then-
I want to get, able to come back.
Okay.
The letter from 2022 just basically demanded I cease and desist immediately. I did not get anything that said what you're saying, Brian.
Well, typically, typically what happens is, when they get a complaint in, they will send a letter just stating, hey, we got this complaint, contact the office, you know, we need to figure out what's going on here.
And I did. I came to the town hall.
So you did get an initial letter?
I got a letter saying cease and desist immediately. I didn't say anything about coming to the town hall and to talk to somebody. And I did come in and ask for a personal kennel license, and then I asked for a commercial kennel license, and I got a no, because I didn't have more than four dogs of my own. But I asked for a kennel license, as again, to take care of four dogs or more, and I got denied that as well.
Okay.
So from the start, when I realized I shouldn't be operating a business, I stopped considering it a business and just saying I take care of some pets, because the town of Danvers wasn't allowing me any leeway. Like, nobody was allowing me to get a kennel license, whether it be personal or commercial, and to cease and desist immediately. So I, I'm here tonight to try to do this the right way and to be legal, unlike all the other doggy daycares that are being ran in town. But because they haven't gotten any anonymous complaints, they're still running their doggy daycares, such as I have been for the past 10 years. But because there's somebody out there who doesn't like me, it's a personal vendetta. I don't know. That's why I'm here tonight.
Okay, thank you. You can go back and ask your second, or make your second comment, whatever it is, question or comment.
I'm just about done. The only other thing is, and this is just on a personal notice, nothing to do with law, okay? This is just a human response. That is, as I said, I live next door. I'm a cat person. She has taken care of my cat out of the goodness of her heart. It's a business to her, yet she has done it out of the goodness of my heart. She has said, I will tell, come over twice a day. I'll speak to Cutie. You know, I'll make sure she's okay. She comforted me. She was a counselor when I went away for two weeks. She also, I can call upon her anytime and say, I'm going away for a week, and she'll come water my plants. She's a good person. Why, why do we want to go after her, when there's a bunch of other things? I'm sure in town, you could be going after Brian. And it's one that I brought to the town and was never pursued, quite honestly.
Just so everyone knows, Brian, Brian is the planning director. He's not the enforcement officer.
No, no, but-
So I think, well, he's got a lot to say tonight. He's just enforcing, he's just enforcing our bylaws.
I needed someone to direct it to, Brian. I apologize if I've been offensive, okay?
Offensive, no.
I'm sorry. All right.
Anyway, okay.
Who's next? Okay, next.
Well, we'll start on this side, but go to that side. The woman with the green shirt.
Green shirt? Hello. My name is Jane Thornell, and I am a homeowner at 182 Center Street. I am her closest to butter. All of my property runs right beside her, and has for 25 years. I, I mean, I fully endorse, now, we've got an attorney up there, you've got a wonderful mind, what can be done? I mean, have you ever dismissed a case based on lack of evidence? Is there anything that can be done to help out this ve, I mean, she's an entrepreneur, and that's wonderful, but more than that, I mean, you can't, you can't, I call her the dog whisperer behind her, her back, because she'll have two dogs there, and somebody will begin to growl, and she'll turn, and she'll say, no, Jacob, we've been all over this. You're to leave Carol Anne alone. And it stops. Now, I've had dogs. Nobody, nobody ever did what I asked them. I have cats now, and just like Susan said, she comes in, she takes care of my cats. Plus, don't forget, you know who's not here? It's her 94-year-old father, who lives in the house with her, who, if she does have to get, relocate, I mean, I don't know what's going to happen to him. So again, I mean, I don't know if any of the other attorneys are up there, but, you know, put, put your minds together and see what we can go ahead and work out. I have seen Melissa with animals. She is so kind, she never raises her voice. I have never seen her be anything but kind to her dogs. They're very obedient, although I just don't know how. But she, she just is that person. I trust her implicitly. When I go away, I hand her my keys, and that's it. And she takes care of one, two, sometimes three cats. She renders a vital service. There are people probably in this room that would not be able to have an animal if it wasn't for Melissa and the service that she renders. So again, I- So, again, I, I mean, in terms of changing the bylaws, I wouldn't, I, this is a special case. I don't know if you can have, like, a special case for Melissa. Whatever you can do to keep this, this young woman employed at home, caring for her 93? He's 93-ish dad, and a, a group of very well-behaved. I'm right next door, and thank goodness I still have my hearing. I have never, in 25 years, had to talk to her about any noise. You would never know that there was a dog next door. So, again, my full support for anything that the board can work out to allow this woman to continue in her business. Thank you.
Thank you. The woman in the striped shirt.
There you go, blue stripes. Green stripes.
Hi, Laura Chevers, 168 R Center Street. The culprit of the lights that bother her, so I will look into that, by the way, Melissa. So, just to piggyback off of Jane real quick, I, I've been in Danvers now just five years, but I live now one house away from her, so it's Melissa, Jane, myself. And I lived in the house for about three and a half years, before I even had known she, she had a little side dog business. And I have a dog. I was always bringing her to a commercial place, she didn't do well there. She's got, she's a rescue, she has anxiety. Maybe even Benji, and I know one of the neighbors. And I ended up, you know, meeting Melissa, bringing my dog there. If it weren't for her, I would not, I literally would have to bring my dog everywhere. I probably wouldn't be able to go to work. You just, you don't, you don't hear. I mean, I'm, I'm literally pinpointed next to the commercial building, and I have her on my other side. And it boggles my mind that she can't do that, but I can have, and I get it, they're commercial, but trucks go in and out. That's beyond more disturbing to the neighborhood than she is on her side. And I think one thing I'm really confused, and I don't know if it would be the zoning, or which department this would be, but we sat here for a meeting a couple of years ago for these trailer parks on Route 1 that are trying to build into our properties. And I sat here, there was some attorney that was just strong-armed us the entire time, telling these homeowners that it's basically what you, what you signed up for when you bought on, in that Beltway, because Route 1's right there, sorry, nothing you can do about it, that you're just going to have trailer park, trailer homes in your backyard. But, yet, she can't have this bit, this dog business, which you can't see driving by her house. You can't, you could be in her driveway, and you wouldn't even know she had dogs there. I mean, I walk over, but there's, there's just, nobody would ever know that, and without her service. And I agree with the, the whole daycare thing. Well, A, their children are a lot louder, but I think my dog makes more noise than, than hers. And it's just, I, I just always go back to, though, that's the whole trailers that are, like, coming into our yard soon, but she can't have possibly six dogs at her house. I understand you can't change the zoning, but maybe there is, maybe she should get a special permit, and she didn't know to do that, or maybe there's some way that it just doesn't get shut down under completely, all because of this meeting, or maybe because of paperwork that might be missing, or the wrong forms or something. I mean, there just has to be a way for a special permit, or just, just something that maybe she could have help with, a better direction than just shutting her down. I mean, she's put her daughter through school, now she's in grad school, she's a single mom, she's doing all that. And I just don't see how she would continue to do that. And if, say you are a pet lover, which she is, does that include, if she wants to have a dog? She actually just lost a dog, unfortunately. So, she could only, she couldn't have a dog if she wanted to have a business and have four of other people's, but not her own pet? Just doesn't seem fair, the whole thing at all. I understand zoning and this, but literally, stand in, stand in front of her house, and you'll be more disturbed by all the cars in Route 1. I know I'm now getting redundant, so I back her, I support her, and Sky wouldn't be, have the life she had without you, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? Why don't we finish up on this side, and then go to the next side?
Hi, Janelle Walters.
Where do you live, your address?
Three Florence Street, in Danvers.
Okay, thank you.
So, my question is, is there, because she is in a commercial zone, is there a way to rezone that?
Well, she's, she's act-
I know it's not going to happen right away, but is there a way to go in and, and look at the property? And she is literally, like, one house over from commercial property. So, how, is there a possibility at doing that?
I mean, you could, you could, you could petition, like, the town meeting. There's a process for it.
I'm going to bring it up.
It would have to go through town meeting.
It would have to go through town meeting.
So, this-
So, you can see where she's only, like, one or two spots over from commercial properties. I'm assuming that the blue is commercial.
Correct, it's highway, it's highway corridor.
So, she's two houses over from commercial.
Right, so you, the only way to do a map change through, for zoning, is to go through town meeting that happens twice a year. This actually, out of all parcels that could potentially be, you know, this is on the cusp, which is where you typically have zoning changes. If it was smack dab in the middle somewhere else, I would say, there's zero chance.
So, she has a possibility to rezone.
I mean, I don't know why town meeting would do it, but you could, if you're, if you're saying, what is the only thing that's possible? You would probably have to get your neighbors around you to, to-
Which are all set to do.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Right.
Yeah, this is, this is a big one.
Yeah, right.
Those all now turn into highway corridor zone, so that if you tear a building down for, that you're going to have difficulty building residential. It is not, so it's like, it's, it's the only, you have this much of something, just because, well, no doubt you would have to have your neighbor involved at 182, from free advice. If I was them, I don't know why they would do this, just, just realistically, I don't know why they would want to do that. It's putting a limitation on your property, unless you're like, I want to develop a commercial property here, and then it's an investment. So, it's not dead, 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 but that is literally the only way, and it's a tall order for town meeting to want to do that.
Am I correct, though, in thinking that it could also be done through a use table change, and not only through a map change?
Probably, with the whole point, we just changed the kennel bylaw to mimic the state law, which is actually pretty permissive, it's more, it was more permissive than ours, so probably wouldn't mess around with that one, because it is quite permissive, the state law, which is what we adhere to now.
Thank you.
That was my only question.
If you want to go back up?
I just have one question.
Joanne Rigucci, Town Meeting Precinct 2. This young lady who was just up, she had a question that, what she said, it popped a question into my head. I'm not familiar, too familiar with the zoning laws, so you can help me, but isn't there a special permit or a finding that the board can do for her?
You can do, like, a special-
Do the process?
A special permit for, like, a personal kennel, where you own all the dogs. And that would be four or more dogs. A commercial has to be in a commercial zone.
In a commercial zone.
And this is residential.
So, there's one more layer to that. So, we're one of the few communities that allows use variances.
Yes.
However, we do not allow use variance. The reason, main reason we're here is because we do not allow use variances in the residential, in, in any residential zone.
Okay. What, and Brian, please-
Most towns, most towns don't allow them at all.
Correct.
So, a use variance would be?
A use variance is when, specifically, oh, here. So, this table, I'm sorry, it's small. The X means it's not allowed. Cannot do it under any circumstances, and that's where we are. Meaning, a, a use variance, if this was down here, these are all the commercial zone, the commercial uses. In the commercial areas, you can do all of, you can do all of these uses. You see where it says P, that means it's permitted. Special permit is SP. So, basically, you can do all of those there. Where it has an X in all the residential zones, means you cannot do it, and you can't even get a, you can't even get a variance for it. It's impossible.
Okay.
So-
I'm just spitballing here.
No, no, honestly, I, I'm not kidding. The only way to operate this is to change the underlying zoning through town meeting.
Can I use this as an example? Is in my precinct, Precinct 2, when Tapleyville didn't come all the way back onto Pine Street, that was shot down, various, it's, it's a mixed-use area, although it's residential. I think it's, I think we're in R1 in Precinct 2, Pine Street?
But there's a, yeah, but there's the overlay of that, the Tapleyville, which is a mixed use.
Right, which, so, which isn't, doesn't go as far back. So, we were, there was a property there, I forget the number, but it was Rebecca Nurse, anyway. They were granted, although they're in a residential area, they, and he does operate a commercial business there, he was granted a special-
Special permit.
Special permit to have additional businesses be able to operate out of those buildings. So, what, what's, what's the difference there? Because it is in R1 that he's in.
The, the long difference is that, that, so, prior to zoning, prior to 1940, that was operated as a commercial property, I believe it was for, you know, off the railroad, it was like coal, but it was, it was an industrial commercial property prior to zoning.
Yeah, it was a fuel company, I think.
So, then, and then it got blessed after that through a variance process at the time. And then, since that time, since it's already been now operating for well over 120, I think it was in, started in the 1880s, 1890s, so it'd been operating for 150 years, there were, all they had to do was modify a, a process that happened there. I told Melissa as well, that if she had been operating prior to zoning, this would be able, this would be a pre-existing, non-conforming use, she'd be able to keep operating. That's not the case here. Yeah, so it certainly happened after zoning.
Okay. Okay, that was my only question, thank you.
Okay. The gentleman with the white shirt?
Not, but, yeah.
Hi, I'm Brian Noddon, I live in Amesbury, Mass. I just have one question for Brian. You said earlier that she had a complaint, and that's why this is all, this is why this all happened. And you very well know that there's many, many other of these businesses in the city. All you have to do is go on Facebook. It's blatant. Many mi, a lot. I could go on there right now and call up a place and have my dog over there tomorrow. So, what I'm asking you is, the only way you'll investigate is if you have a complaint, right? You don't, like, do any research, go on Facebook, the town thing, and just look and say, look at all these things here. You just go on, you just wait for a complaint, is that correct?
We, we do not, we do not try to find people to bust, no.
No, but when you have one, like, random complaint, then you go full force, is, I mean?
No, we, we write, we write letters. It's, it's, that's what we do. We get it, we get, we, we get a complaint, we write a letter and say, hey, if you're doing this, this is, this is, these are the rules. If you're not doing this, you're good.
And, and again-
We actually didn't think much of it.
And again, as far as our enforcement officer goes, Brian, I mean, you can, you can, you can agree or disagree. He goes out and he's looking for violations, and he does it on a consistent basis.
He goes out and looks, is it just out driving, right? It's not like any, online or anything?
Yeah, so, when we have, we have a, a list of active violations.
That, that he is out monitoring all the time.
He monitors those on a weekly basis.
Yep. So, but again, if, even, even for Melissa's business, if he drove by and he saw her out with one dog, that, that is not going to tip him off that there might be something going on. And usually, when, when he goes out to investigate things, especially in residential, it's because, in a residential zone, it's because someone has contacted the town and said, hey, this is an issue, and this is why.
That's the only way you guys investigate anything like this, is if you get a complaint. Basically, that's it. No complaint, they can keep their business going?
Well, again, like-
No, so, we, we kind of figured from this, that we're going to probably have to be writing a lot of letters.
Right.
We're fully aware that, of, of what this means. However, all we are doing is enforcing the laws. You want the laws to change, let's change the laws. But, this is the job that we had. But, you want to change the laws, that's easy, I know how to do that.
But, we can't change the law. We can just, we can just interpret and enforce, that's really all that we do here. Do you have any other questions? Okay. The woman in the blue shirt.
Good evening. My name's Kelly Russell, I live at 8 Rocky Hill Circle. I'm in a different neighborhood than Melissa, I'm behind the high school. I've lived there for about four years. My partner, Justin, purchased our home about seven-ish years ago, and Melissa has watched our yellow lab buddy for those seven years. He is probably one of the most important family members I have. He's like another child to me. I have two stepkids, they love him dearly, he, he's spoiled rotten at our house. He sleeps in the bed with us, they sneak him, the kids sneak him food from the table. He goes on walks every day, we take him to Home Depot, you get the picture. In addition to that, I'm a very self-aware worrywart. I worry about Buddy, I worry about every member of my family whenever I'm not with them. But, let me tell you, when Buddy is with Melissa, I don't have to worry about him. Because I know, he's getting fed on time, he's getting the right food, he's getting the right amount of food. He is going outside whenever he wants, he's being watered, he's having fun with the other dogs that she has. He even sleeps in her bed, sorry, Melissa. My point is, that even though I'm a huge worrywart, and he is a family member to us, and another kid to us, I don't have to worry about him when he's at Melissa's. However, I have brought my dog to commercial facilities on the very rare occasion that she was not able to watch him. And both times, he came home sick. He had a terrible cough, I had to take him to the vet and get him on antibiotics. It was horrible, he kept us up all night, it was like a big, like, whooping cough. It was horrible. Not once has he gotten sick at Melissa's, because she takes care of the dogs, and she doesn't have 20, 30, 40, 50 dogs, running around, you know, getting each other sick, or, you know, doing whatever. I trust Melissa more than my own family. I've had family watch him, again, on the very rare occasion that she was not able to, and he was left home alone for eight, nine hours, it happened a few months ago. And it was horrible, knowing that I was far away and couldn't get home to him. What did Melissa do? I'm texting her about it, she runs over to my house and lets him out, and makes sure he's fed, makes sure he's able to go to the bathroom. I would like to ask all of you, genuinely, how many people do you have in your life that you could call at the, and they would come over at the drop of a hat, to let your dog out? I mean, he's, he is like a kid to me. And I can tell you how many people are on my list. One, and she's sitting right there. No one else. I've, I've asked other people who might live a few minutes closer, nope, I can't, I'm busy, nope, sorry, I have things to do. Never with Melissa, never, not one time, as she told me, no, I can't at least come over to your house and let him out. Not once. So, again, I understand there's laws, I, I get it. But, like Brian just said, you, there is power to change laws, too. So, I'm really genuinely hoping that you can make that effort, and find it within your heart. She's a good person, she really is. And I think, I mean, everyone here has, has said that. I, I don't think that's in question right now. I think we all know that Melissa's one of the best people I could have watched my dog, and one of the best people, she's a friend, she's not only my dog sister, but she's become my friend over the last four years. So, I just think it's wrong that she could potentially lose her business. You know, she's a hard-working, single mom, she deserves the opportunity to legally operate her business. And I would love if you could all find a way to make that happen with her. Thank you.
Thank you. The woman in the striped dress.
My name is Vanessa White, and I live in Beverly. I've been sending my dog to Melissa's, well, dogs, over time, for 10 years, and I might get sad, actually. So, last year, when I, in February of 2024, I was in Italy for two and a half weeks. I know it sounds rough, but she was watching my 11-year-old dog, and he had a slipped disc, what we thought was a slipped disc, he couldn't, he lost mobility in his leg. And Melissa brought him to the vet. I wasn't here, right? Melissa brought him to the vet with my mom. My mom, who does not like animals, and like, has a vet Melissa on text message. And they took him home, and like, she put him in the crate so he could get better, and like, I, I knew I didn't have to spend the money to come home, like, you know, five days early, because it was a, something you could manage with rest. And Melissa, I knew, would take care of my dog like it was her own. And then, a few days later, she found him, he wouldn't get up. And it turned out that he had a breast tumor in his spleen, and Melissa was the one to take him to the vet. And when he would- And when he had 12 hours left to live, and I had to fly across the country, or fly, fly across the world to be back in time, but that's the kind of, like, dog sitter that she is, right? You're not getting that when you bring him to somewhere else. My dog sleeps in her bed, same thing, it's, you can't have 20 dogs all sleeping in your bed, even though that might be some people's fantasies. But I just wanted, that's like my personal story about Melissa, in terms of, like, you just, you, that's why I bring my dogs to her, is, I have, I have one that goes to her now, it's like dogs plural because of the past, but I agree. I, I laugh when you say that you can see it from the road, because there's no way, no way, that you can tell that she's running any kind of, like, because her fence, her fence is very high, I want to say it's like eight feet, six feet, it's like tall, solid, you can't see anything, and there's never any noise. I do want to point out, like, I know you said you're gonna send out letters to people, like, there's a huge gig economy right now, right? So Airbnb, I'm sure you might have problems with that in town, maybe, maybe not as much, Rover, like, like, I don't think you're on Rover, I don't know, but like Rover is just a way for everybody to hustle on the side and take care of dogs. Like, I could sign up for Rover and start, and start taking care of dogs, anybody can do that. And so Rover is just like, literally, go online, it's like a dating app for watching your dogs, like, go online and find anybody. So you probably have hundreds of people in your town doing that same work, hundreds. What I, what I, at the end of the day, I'm a business owner, I own a grocery brand, we sell in stores across the country. And I, we built our business, my sister and I, going around and selling our pierogi at breweries, and frying them up, and I dealt with a lot of local towns. And what I've found is that, we say, pursue the American dream, build a business, but local towns and governments are standing in the way. They are standing in the way. And that is not your fault, that is decades and decades and decades of laws, but it is, I have found that local towns and governments have made, and I'm like, very liberal, but in this case, it's like, they make it hard for people to have businesses, they make it hard. You aren't deciding tonight not about just a zoning law, you are deciding about someone's livelihood. Just to be very clear here, the question about whether you've considered going to get somewhere else, another commercial business, that is like, it's a reasonable question, but it's also a ludicrous question. Because that is like a crazy investment for this woman who has a very specific need for with her father, and in her home, and everything like that, and she does not run that. If, if she went to a commercial facility, she would lose her clients, because there is a reason why we send them to her with her sleeping in a big slumber party with the dogs, right? So that's like not a question, it's not a reality. So you're dealing with someone, you're not just setting, you're not just saying, we're gonna enforce a zoning law, you're basically telling her that she can't earn her money this way, she was going, going to have to go do something else. So take that seriously. Because we need to be better as a country in supporting entrepreneurship, as a country, as a local level, and it starts at the local level. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? The, um, the gentle, the other gentleman in the white shirt?
Hi, yes, my name's Ed Nolan, I don't live in this town, I live in Lynn. Melissa watches my baby. It sounds like here, nothing's gonna be done. You guys already made up your minds, it's a zoning issue. You mentioned that laws can be changed. Where does she go from here? Because losing her as a dog sitter is not reasonable to a lot of us.
A reasonable change would be to the use table, I think there's a, I think that a map change is a very tall order. This is also a tall order, but it's pretty much the only way, if we change the R in the residential districts, you could change those to special permits, so that at least there's an avenue that the zoning board could say, no, that's too many dogs, or let's, like, they'd be looking at floor plan, like, they'd really do like, and invest, like, a real deep dive into it, so, but that, that would allow anyone in any residential district, again, it would have, it would be a special permit, but that, that would probably be if my, the only, one of the best ways to probably get what you need, simply because a map change is frankly just not gonna, probably not gonna happen. This is also tough, but you can start making this argument that there's a, there's a case where there's something that's not a commercial, it's, it's really a residential style, whatever, you're, you know, but the idea is that, how to do it, you change the top row of the X's to special permit. That's one way that would allow someone to at least apply, and then the zoning board would be able to make a case to say whether or not they think it makes sense or not. That's probably the only realistic change that I, I mean, I, I think you, you guys are very well versed, very well versed in this as well, I would.
I think the map change would be a lot harder, and it would impact too many other, too many other people's property. So I agree, I think it's, it's that, it's the use change instead of the map change.
Right, instead of, instead of not being allowed, it would be allowed by special permit.
By a special permit.
So.
What about a permit per dog? If she's only doing six, and the thing is four, can she not find a way to get a permit for two additional dogs? I mean.
That would be through the ZBA.
Yeah.
So it's basically anything more than, than four, no matter what, you're still in front of ZBA anyway. But this would just allow you to apply. Right now, you can't even apply.
Right, yeah.
For a variance, because you can't do that there. But this is how to change it. We change the use table, you know, you, you would say, R1, R2, R3, all those top ones right there, all those X's would be SP for special permit, which again, would allow someone like you, or anyone else, to apply, to potentially get something that looks like a commercial kennel, even though it might not be. But then they would be able, so anyone would be able to apply then, in any residential district. So you're gonna be fighting that for the people that don't want doggy daycares in their neighborhood, for whatever reason. But that is the only, that is your best avenue, and it is, it is a tough one, but that is probably your best.
Up at, you have to go up to the microphone. And then after you're done with your question, the woman in the back, who has the blue shirt, you can, you can comment, and then you can go ask.
Just a quick question, sorry. So how would she, is that you, you all who have that power to do that?
That goes through town meeting.
And that happens twice a year?
Correct.
Typically.
When's the next one?
Probably February.
Yeah.
Even though there's six months left in the year?
Well.
It's May and February is when we typically do them.
Okay. So until then, what are her options, just to have the four or less dogs at a time?
I mean.
Because again, like, you're thinking about people's livelihoods.
We have to vote here, so we don't really want to discuss what her options are, really, until like we vote, so. Who's next? The, the woman in the blue shirt in the back?
Good evening, Christine Atteney, 29 Bramon Street, Danvers. I'm not gonna belabor it, we have a legal issue versus, you know, something that's very heartfelt. I have a rescue, he's nervous, I will not put him in a kennel. I've had him, Melissa watch him for the last five years, he sleeps in her bed. I think there's a bigger issue here now, but he loves her, he runs in there, he's very nervous, but he runs in there when we pull up, and she offers a viable service. And I do think that this is a bigger issue in town. So I, I know you're probably gonna follow the law tonight, and that's understandable, but I, I think if anything good could come out of this, is maybe follow this process here, and look into alternatives. It is her livelihood, but her ability to run her business affects all of our lives, my life, I'm a single mother, I work full-time, I have this dog. And I will say too, that I've, I've had her for five years, and I might use her maybe six or seven times a year, I don't know, give or take what's going on in my crazy job, but strangely enough, I have never, when I've dropped him off or picked him up, I've never run into another client in that driveway. I've never not been able to pull into her driveway. It's, it's, it's kind of interesting, and I've, and I've always thought that. She provides excellent care, and I don't know, I just want to speak on her behalf, and I'm hopeful that, from this, this meeting, that you can find a solution for her, but for others that are looking to offer a service in the town of Danvers, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Joanne Muguchi, Town Meeting, Precinct 2. Is there, I hope there may be a way, since this possible solution has been discussed right now, that perhaps the board can consider, when they're voting tonight, to maybe continue this issue, until a resol, a resolution that can help Melissa to keep her business, and then hopefully then apply for the special permit, but until then, that she, until there's a final decision made, that she can continue her business, as, you know, there's, there was no notice given, it was said cease and desist, she wasn't, I don't think even given 30 days, you know, so.
Years.
What, excuse me?
This has been going on.
This has been going on for three years.
Yeah, three years.
Okay, so what, what is the penalty if she doesn't cease and desist? Just out of my curiosity.
All zoning enforcement orders are, have the ability to be fined at most $300 per day.
Okay, thank you. So I'm hoping that maybe perhaps the board can just continue this issue until Town Meeting can, I know I'm getting a smirk, but, you know, no, because there's a lot of lives impacted here, and you weigh in the law, and I know it doesn't come up too much, but you know, you're weighting the law against a personal hardship. And I know when people come up in front of the board for a finding, or for a variance, they have to prove a personal hardship for a special permit, whether it's the planning board or the zoning board. I think a personal hardship has been proven by not only Melissa, but, but of the people that, and, and especially the dogs that rely on, for her care. So I'm hoping that you can just continue this issue until more information can be found, and maybe Brian Cassidy can come up here and explain exactly what he saw from the road, where there is, I mean, I, I have to just be honest, I'm not a client of Melissa's, my dog is not a client, I just know where Melissa lives, and there is no way from the road you can see into her backyard. It's a solid fence, it's a solid house, it's a round driveway, there's many trees, there is no way. So that makes me highly suspicious that that was in his report, that he saw all these dogs. There is just no way.
Okay, all right.
So I hope the board can continue this, and allow Melissa to operate while this issue is being continued and looked into more by the town. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have to close the comment section.
Madam Chair, I would just, I would interject that unless it's something new, I think we've got a clear picture here.
All right, quickly, up, and then, do we have anyone online who wants to speak? Okay. Okay, all right, and she's new, so.
189 Center Street. I may be wrong in this, but the zoning board has, you entertain a variance to the zoning rules, to property boundaries and things like that. Is that correct, or am I wrong? Does, don't you get a variance if you want to have a different setup?
Yeah, I mean, there are certain situations where.
Setbacks and things like that.
Right, would be a variance, yes.
Okay, you come in and you ask for a variance. So in this case, why can't we have a variance in terms of the number of dogs, based on a hardship, on this particular case? It won't be long-lasting, it won't be forever, it'll be as long as she can handle dogs.
Can I speak to that?
Please do.
So, just so you know, a variance, if you, we grant a variance, it stays with the property forever. You could have 50 owners in the time, that variance will always be there. So somebody could have a kennel of 50 dogs, so it's, it's tough to, it's tough to grant a variance for something like that.
And as we said, we, we can't grant any use variance in residential, so, it's like the double whammy. There's the girl in the gray shirt, if you have something quick to say, hop on up, and then we will end the comment section of the meeting.
Hi, my name is Jaden, 184 Center Street. I'm speaking not only as a community member.
Excuse me, your last name, too?
LaPointe.
Okay.
But as the daughter of a single mom who has spent over a decade running her small home-based pet care service, it's never caused any issues, no noise complaints, no traffic disruptions, just honest, dependable work that's helped feed our family, pay the bills, and get me through college.
Okay.
Wasn't supposed to cry. I wouldn't be able to do what I'm doing right now, I'm getting my masters, I'm becoming a child therapist, and none of that would be possible if it wasn't for this business. I'll skip all of the redundant stuff I wanted to say, but with respect to all of you, I believe the role of public service to, should be to support community members who are working hard, contributing positively and causing no harm. And shutting down the only source of income for a single mother over a zoning technicality, while many others, as we know, are doing the same thing without issue, does not reflect that mission. And maybe that's not your mission, but I think it's really hard to ask who this is actually serving. Is this really about protecting our town, or is it about someone needing a win? Because from where we're standing, it feels like you guys are now deciding the fate of families who have been here for generations, people who have done nothing inherently wrong, who have contributed to this town for decades, and now they're being the ones told to prove themselves. So I really hope, even though it seems like you all have your minds made up, I'm asking you to look beyond the paperwork and to consider the full context, think about all of the people that this impacts, and ask yourselves, does shutting this down truly reflect the kind of town we want to be? One that supports hard-working families, or one that turns away from them? Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so the comment section of this applicant meeting is over, and we are now on to deliberations by the board. So with that said, I will go first to John. Who, is he still there?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, now, thank you, and, you know, it's very clear to me that Ms. Nardone runs a very passionate business that serves a purpose. It's clear to the people that spoke tonight, the clients that she engages with. However, you know, that's not what we're here to decide. And I really do take exception, I feel like the planning department is being beat up by what they're there to do. We don't go out and, and seek these problems out. You know, this is, this is really a question, has the planning director, or building inspector, or enforcement officer erred in their ruling? And it's by Ms. Nardone's own admission that she is running a business in a residential neighborhood that's not allowed. I do believe there are options for her. One would be to rent out a facility, not as ideal as running it out of her home, but it's clear to me she runs a quality business, and people would follow her wherever she goes. And I think that's a great thing, and it's a, it's a great honor to her. However, you know, this, our, our board, this zoning board, you know, we get a clear picture of this neighborhood, and in this case, her clients, from the people who speak tonight, and it's clear to me she's not a bad person, we're not here, nobody's questioning that. But we are here to rule on whether the enforcement officer erred, and, you know, we don't have an avenue, I think there's been some confusion here, where she could have filed for a variance or a special permit. Our town bylaws do not allow that currently. And the only way to change that is through town meeting. The zoning board does not control that, or even initiate that. So that's with your town meeting members, that's with the selectmen, and that's with the process. I think someone got up and spoke, well, why is there only a meeting next February? That, you know, if we want five town meeting members a year, then that would have to get changed through the right avenue. So I'm in support of the decision by the planning department, I think there are some other avenues for Ms. Nardone to continue to operate her business, so I don't see any avenue that the zoning board can do anything tonight to, you know, make a special exception, or not mean people, you know, if somebody wanted to run a. You know, if somebody wanted to run a machine shop in a residential neighborhood, it would be a way different discussion tonight. And, you know, it's clear, I mean, people will love their animals, there's a lot of passion about something like this, but our hands are tied. And until this changes to our bylaws or initiation through Town Meeting, there's nothing this zoning Board can do. And so, I will vote to uphold the decision of the Enforcement Officer. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Kevin?
Like John said, we're here to determine if there was an error in zoning enforcement. And so, considering that, I think there's two places to make an error, an error in fact or an error in law. I don't think there's a dispute about the facts, I think the applicant and town staff agree on the facts. In terms of law, I believe that the Zoning Enforcement Officer was correct about the law as well and the use table and how the property is zoned. I am not voting tonight, so I will, I will not say how I, not say how I will vote because I will not, but I do not believe that the Zoning Enforcement Officer has erred. I do want to echo the comments that it is clear that this business is beloved by its many clients. And I agree with the comments that, you know, there is a new gig economy out there and in some ways maybe we should recognize that, but I do not believe that this Board has the, has the power to do that. And working with staff or the Planning Board might be a good start if the applicant wishes to see a change in our bylaws.
Thank you. Ken?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, I don't think anybody's disputing what a great person Melissa is and dog care person. That goes without saying after talking to all of you. That being said, like John Bounor said, you know, we're handcuffed by the zoning laws. It's nothing we can change, it's a Town Meeting change issue. So, I have to go with the Zoning Enforcement Officer.
Thank you. Ken?
So, I don't think this would even be before us if we couldn't make a decision. So, it's not like we're handcuffed because why is it here? So, we can make a decision whether to agree or disagree. So, I disagree because, excuse me, because there should be some wiggle room in here. I mean, I don't know why, what mechanism could we use? There's probably not one that's in the law right now, but I believe there should be a mechanism to use in a situation like this. So, I mean, I feel like the totality of the, you know, all the facts, all the circumstances, and I think one complaint in 10 years, and we really don't have, I mean, it is one complaint in 10 years, I think that's a pretty good record. So, I, I mean, I'm for not, I'm against a violation, so I'm for the applicant.
Technically, it was not a complaint, I want to make that very clear, that no one actually complained about the business. They just said that they think they are operating. So, no one said that there's, there was a, there was a, no one said that there was a problem with, with the business. So, there wasn't a complaint about the business, it was a complaint that a business was operating.
Right, right, okay. Thank you. Brian? Becky?
I think it's a difficult situation and I totally sympathize with the situation. I wish that we had been talking about this in 2022 when this first came up and maybe we could have had a solution by now. But I feel that we have to support the building and the zoning enforcement person and I think we need to make some changes because we have people running dog daycares all over Danvers and you're not the only one, we know that. And I think we need to look at this whole situation and come up with a solution. So, that's, I would support the decision.
Chris?
Thank you all for what you said in support of Melissa. Just like Kevin said, I also am not voting tonight, so I'm not going to voice yea or nay on either. Although I do second what Becky just said, I think this, this could be something that needs to be looked into for your assistance. As we see, it has put a dog through college and it's your livelihood. So, whatever can be done to streamline the process, we'll do our best.
Okay, finally me. You know, as, as John started and Ken followed, coming in front of this Board with a violation means that we can either uphold his decision or we can overturn it. In this case, as Kevin said, the facts aren't on your side and neither's the law. So, unfortunately, coming in front of this Board, there's really nothing we can do. We can steer you in the right direction, I think the use variance would probably be the lower bar for you to hurdle, but that means that you're going to have to convince residential and all three districts, residential, you know, members of the community that this would be a good change. And again, I think everybody would applaud you, these people love you and they think you do a wonderful job and I'm sure that you do, but that doesn't mean that people in the community would want anybody running a dog care business in their neighborhood. So, again, I do think that that's the easier hurdle, but it's still going to be a hurdle for you. And again, I have to vote to uphold the decision by the Enforcement Officer. And I do want to say once again, our Enforcement Officer, Brian Cassidy, not only is he a great guy, he's very diligent and he, he will go out of his way to help people in whatever situation that they're in. So, I don't want people to look on him as somehow, I don't know, not doing his job or not doing it fairly because that's not the case at all. So, with that, do I have a motion?
Want me to read it?
Yeah, oh, yes, please.
Sure, I will. I make a motion to grant the appeal from the decision of the Zoning Board Officer that would allow commercial kennel operations to continue in a residential zone. I don't think that's...
No, no, no.
Then have the vote and...
Madam Chair, point of clarification, I think we are denying the appeal, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so that's what we're talking about, we're going to have to change the language. Or either that or we have to vote...
We would just vote, no.
No, right, okay.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. You could just have the vote still.
Yeah. Okay, read it again, just so everyone can hear it again.
I make a motion to grant an appeal from a decision by the Zoning Enforcement Officer that would allow commercial kennel operations to continue in a residential zone.
Okay.
Oh, no.
Any, so we just do in favor and against?
Yeah, so he already said...
Anybody, anybody in favor?
I'm for the applicant.
Okay, so you're in favor. How many opposed? I'm opposed.
Aye.
All right, so four opposed and we have two. Okay.
The language doesn't match.
Well, it does, it's just the flaw, it's just the flaw. So, in other words, you voted for it and we voted against it.
Shouldn't it have language for the cease and desist order because that's really what we're doing.
You know, because she, right, she filed the appeal, so it's, it's on her appeal, it's not on his order.
Correct.
Correct? Okay.
So, yeah, you, you voted to grant the appeal to her.
Right, and we voted no.
And they voted no.
We, we're voting to uphold the enforcement order. Okay. Is Sycamore the next one?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you. Yes.
Our next case is 2 Sycamore Street, this is zoned R2. Requests a finding for front setback encroachment 25.4 feet where 30 feet is required and a variance for side setback encroachment 11.9 feet where 15 feet is required. In order to build an addition to an existing single-family home on an undersized lot, 10,010 square feet where 20,000 square feet is required. The request is made by Dominic Malarba Jr., dock at 25-5104. Did I say your name correctly? Okay.
Good evening, my name is Dominic Malarba and this is my wife Diana. We are the homeowners of 2 Sycamore Street. We are seeking relief for a front setback encroachment of 25.4 feet and a variance for a side setback encroachment of 11.9 feet in order to build an addition to our existing single-family home. This would include a master bedroom, bathroom, closet, and a second car garage. The reason for the addition is to add additional living space and storage for our growing family. We have also spoken with a majority of our neighbors and all have been supportive of said variance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Chris, why don't we start down there with you?
The only question I had was, no, hold on, let me bring up. Brian, was the plan for this in there?
Yeah, it's 2 Sycamore, proposed block plan. Or did you want the 3D?
Nope, I got it on. So, my only question to you, the addition, now I know you are looking for two-sided garage, two bay garage.
Yes, sir.
Is the garage going to be wide open, front to, where does, I guess my question is, where does the garage end? How deep is the garage going?
So, if you can see, so it will be more or less a one and a half, one will be more or less for storage, so it'll be actually a one-car garage.
Yep.
Although you will see two from the street.
So, will that one-car garage be on the right-hand side?
Yes, sir.
And will it be two cars deep?
Just one.
Just one? Okay, that's almost it, thank you.
Okay. Becky?
So, that, it's going to still continue to be a single-story house?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And can you just tell us a little bit about your family?
This is my wife Diana and we have a daughter who's two and a half years old, Vienna.
Oh, my goodness.
As well as a dog, Banks. And we're hoping to have more, so.
Okay.
That's why we're here.
And I don't think I have any other questions.
I have no questions.
Ken?
I think my questions have been answered, thank you.
Kevin?
For the side setback that you're requesting, normally there would have to be something in particular about the lot, the soil, the topography, and your lot seems to me to be a very standard kind of squared off, I don't know if you're technically in Woodvale, but Woodvale-style lot. Is there, is there some hardship that prevents you from building up rather than out in a way that would comply with the zoning laws?
More or less a financial hardship.
Thank you, that's all, that's all my questions.
John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't see the setback of 25.4 feet on the layout, I see 20, I'm sorry, 25, I see 25.6, is that because of the overhang?
Yeah, I'll get it. Yeah, it is labeled on the plan here at 25.6.
25.6, yeah.
So, what relief are we seeking?
Oh, that was a personal error for me, I believe.
All right, as long as...
So, I guess it'll lead into my...
So, the 25.6 is correct?
Ah, yeah, what you have on the paper is correct.
Okay, good, that's important.
The plans are correct.
Okay, and can I ask, does that include the overhang?
Yes, that will include the overhang.
So, if we grant relief to 25.6, that will satisfy you?
Yes.
Not 25.4 is the application. Can I ask, what's the square footage of the current house?
Right around 1,030 square feet, I believe, with no basement.
And is the shed there by permit? Is the shed still there?
Yes, the shed is still there.
And is it there by permit?
Ah, no, it is not, it's an 8-by-10 shed.
Yeah, so it's under 200, so you don't need a permit.
But there by right. And I think, was it, I'm sorry, is it Kevin, our new alternate?
Yes.
Yes, Ken.
And it is the alternate.
Kevin, sorry, he alluded to the side setback a little bit. And I believe the side setback is 15 in R2, am I correct about that, Brian?
Correct.
And what consideration was given to meeting that 15 where you'd come in three more feet?
It would just not a lot for enough room for a master bedroom. It would make the room just around eight and a half feet with wall thickness, which would be fairly small.
Okay, that answers my questions, thank you.
So, I'm looking at the architectural designs and I thought I heard you say that it's really only, even though you have two garage doors, it's only one garage bay. So, is the other just storage or is that another room?
It's our, it's our current garage, which is not the full depth of a garage, so you can't actually park a car in there.
So, so what would you...
So, it's just storage.
All right, so it's just going to be storage?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I don't have any other questions. Anybody from the audience?
Sorry, Madam Chair.
Oh, if you have another question, go ahead.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I want additional. What is the square footage of the addition? livable square footage?
I believe it's under 700 square feet of actual living.
So, this will bring the house to 1730 approximately?
Roughly.
Very good, thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, through you, one more question?
Yes.
Is the final fence staying where it is?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the Board? Any questions from the audience? Anybody online, Brian, who has any questions?
Nope.
All right, so back to the Board to deliberate. Chris?
Madam Chair, sorry, some more before we deliberate. Yeah, just one more before we deliberate. Could I ask the applicant, is there any consideration to removing the garage door? I guess I don't understand the point of having a second garage door. If you can't park a car there, why not close it in and have a different look, I guess?
I just, visually it looks better with having a two and it will be still, I believe, it's connected as if it was a two-car garage, it's just the depth won't allow for you to park a car, if that makes...
Motorcycle.
Yeah, you could put a motorcycle or whatnot in there. So, it will be part of the garage.
Okay, so you didn't consider having just one single door?
No, because there is, that's where the current garage door is, so we'll be adding to the right of it.
So, you say, okay, you're just expecting, okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, deliberations. Chris?
As you heard before, I am not voting tonight, but knowing the Woodvale area, knowing, starting a family, knowing the size of those houses, I do see what you're going after and what you do need in order to make your family bigger. And I can see the financial hardship for going up rather than going out. So, although I am not voting, I would be in favor of both the things here for you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Becky?
I understand the problems in this town with trying to, you can't really sell your house and buy a new one because there aren't any new ones to buy. We just have such limited inventories and we want to keep our young families in this town. I think it's really important. So, I think that we need to try to accommodate our young families and help them expand their houses so they can grow. The side setback, the 11.9 where 15 is required, we often would go halfway, so 12 feet versus 15 isn't a problem for me and the front is acceptable. I don't really want to design your garage, I know John has his comments, but I think... I know John has his comments, but I think it would, it looks fine the way it is, and you should design it the way you want. So I would be in support of this so that you can continue to live in Danvers.
Thank you.
Ken?
I'm also in support of this. You don't even have a basement to, like, build down there. And I'm fine with the garage doors, too. I mean, you have to, you might want to put a alarm or something. You gotta open up to get it out and stuff. Yeah, so I approve it as is.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ken?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this is very, very low impact to this neighborhood. Obviously, the new neighbors have come forward to say they're against it or anything like that, so I'm in favor of this.
Kevin?
I am not voting tonight, so take my comments for what they're worth, which is very little. But I will say, in terms of the finding that you're asking for, I don't have a problem with it. In terms of the variance that you're asking for, I do not think you've technically met the findings that this board is supposed to reach in order to grant the variance, and that there's not something particular to the lot which requires a variance. It's more of a desire of how you want to expand your home. And I do not believe it is necessarily perfecting the spirit of our zoning laws. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I see this as a very modest approach, and I agree with Becky. I mean, it's, you know, it's so difficult to, you know, find the right balance. Given home prices, inventory availability, and interest rates, so this owner has decided to try to expand this small home that doesn't have any storage. So provided that we make the correction of 25.6 feet versus 25.4, I would vote for this.
Thank you. And yes, I would vote for this. I agree. I think it's a minimal infraction. And I also, I also think that, you know, the design is great. I think it will look nice in the neighborhood. And I also think it's great that you reached out to all of your neighbors, and they're all on board with this, which is always a good thing. So I will also vote for this.
Thank you.
So is that setback 25.4 or 25.6?
They said the plan is correct?
Yes.
So it's 25.6?
Got it.
And you're sure?
Just want to make sure we read it in correctly. I make a motion to issue a finding under Table 2 of the zoning bylaw to construct... Did we vote?
Oh, you're doing the motion. You're doing the motion. Yeah, yeah.
First and then the vote. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's been a long night.
Yeah. Motion to issue a finding under Table 2 of the zoning bylaw to construct an addition that will be located closer to the front property line than permitted as of right. 25.6 feet where 30 feet is required, in that the proposed extension alteration of the use is not substantially more detrimental than the existing structure to the neighborhood.
Do I have a second? By Becky. All in favor?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
We gotta do the variance, though.
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
And make a motion to issue the variance under Table 2 of the zoning bylaw to construct an addition that is proposed to be located 25.6 feet from the property line where 30 feet is required, in that the proposed addition, alteration of the use is not substantially more detrimental than the existing structure to the neighborhood. Adjacent properties would not be adversely impacted. The reduction, reduced dimensions would not be detrimental to the public good and would not substantially deviate from the intent or purpose of this bylaw.
Second.
Becky, seconds. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Now, congratulations and good luck.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good luck, guys.
Thanks for being patient tonight.
Yes.
I got nervous there.
Good luck.
Okay. Our final case is 68 Locust Street. This is Zoned R2. Request a dimensional variance for side setback encroachment, five feet where 15 is required for a new two-story accessory structure. The first floor will be a garage for vehicles, and the second floor will be a protected use accessory dwelling unit at 795 square feet. The lot is non-conforming due to size, 9,623 square feet where 20,000 square feet is required, and frontage 44 feet where 125 feet is required. Their request is made by Stacy Burnson, docket 25-5105.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Stacy Burnson. I am the owner of 68 Locust Street. We are looking to build a two-car garage in the lot. As you can see, it's a very oddly shaped lot, and it's very small. We're looking to build a two-car garage. We're trying to utilize the hill a little bit because it may look pretty because it's grown in, but it's kind of useless because it's not livable. We don't use the area at all. So we're doing a 30 by 35-foot garage, two-car garage with a 795-foot, square-foot livable area in the accessory dwelling unit. My mom has been living in New Hampshire and has recently sold her home and is moving back to the area, so this is going to be her home. So I'm... And this is much longer than she anticipated this evening. So that is, that is everything. Oh, we're, I'm sorry. We're looking for dimensional relief on the setback, on the side. So the side closest to 66 Locust Street, we need 15. We have five. Part of the reason why we kind of chose that is it is, it's where the driveway, it's going to be close to the driveway. It's right behind our current, our neighbor at 66. It's behind his garage. And also, there was an existing wall that was left from previous garage, so we kind of left, picked that as our pivot point. So that was why we had looked at some other options. The neighbor at 70 Locust Street was not crazy about us doing anything on that side, so we're trying to keep it over to this side where 66 Locust Street is actually, he was amenable to the plan, I believe.
Okay. Thank you. John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, I would like to go to Mr. Zakelli.
Yes.
Brian, do, I believe, we, what is the standard allowable size of a garage? There's a, there's a one-gurop by law.
So this, in the R2, you're allowed, for a garage, it's 15?
15 by what?
Oh, I thought you were asking for setback. You're saying...
No, he's asking...
Square footage?
Square footage of our...
Chris, you might probably build more garages. I was going to say 24 by 20, something like that. What would you say is...
24 by...
24 by 24?
Usually, yeah.
Yes, if you're looking to get two garage bays in, yes.
Two bays. So the largest we allow by right is 40 by 30. This is 35, this is 35 by 30. So it's within allowable dimensions.
Okay. So I guess, and staying with you, Brian, because the plot plan doesn't show the actual address, so I just want to be clear. This is 68, correct?
68.
And to the right, I'm assuming Lot 125 is 70? Okay.
So, yeah, 70, yep.
And Lot 127 is 66?
Correct.
Okay. I don't know why the, usually the addresses are on there, aren't they? I don't know why. So I guess to the applicant, did you consider a slightly smaller garage so you could fit in the setback? Or at least get us to, as Becky mentioned before, to a halfway point of the setback?
So if we did, if we went to 15 feet, that garage would actually be in the middle of the yard?
Yeah, I don't know. I'm not asking that. I'm just asking if you considered a smaller garage than 30 by 35.
The reason that we did the 30 by 35 is, yes, we wanted a two-car garage. Second, we're planning on putting the stairs to go up to the apartment on the interior, so we don't have to worry about snow removal, and she will also be safe. We're planning on putting an electric chair. Just as she does get older, it makes it easier to get up the stairs and with all that stuff. So that was actually why we chose to do the 30 by 30. And also, under the accessory dwelling unit law, it allowed her to get the square footage to get it... We're trying to get her as big a unit as we possibly could so that she could, she's moved from a house now to an apartment, and this is about half the size of what she was used to living with, so.
Okay. And you'll have to forgive me, I'm actually away and out of town, so usually I would do a site survey or site visit. I wasn't able to look at your property. So does this property have a garage currently?
No, it does not. There had been one previously, but I couldn't find anything. We kind of looked through the satellites. It's been a long time since there's been one back there. We found the foundation when we had had a pad put in for an RV. It was just, it was just crushed stone, and when they dug down to level it out a little bit, it actually, there are two walls there from a previous garage, but it was obviously a one-car garage. It was the old...
So you're not looking to do any curb cut change to the street, meaning the driveway where it is now is what you're planning to stay with?
Yes.
And the shed that's on the property, is it conforming and is it there by permit?
It did not require a permit. I believe it's a 10 by 12, so it was 120 square feet, so it didn't require a permit.
Standard?
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Kevin?
I did take the opportunity to drive by today, so from the street visual and looking at the plot plan, I think I understand basically where the new structure would go. I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Ken?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you explain to me a little bit about all these retaining walls in the back? Are they all coming out? It looks like the garage is, like, on top of them. Obviously, you've got to move those.
So the plan is the foundation is going to be built into the hill, so for the backside of the garage. So that's going back in, so where those retain. We have kind of tiered retaining walls. Unfortunately, there's a lot of water that comes from up above, so we kind of put these retaining walls to kind of slow things down, put the water, to slow the water and all that good stuff. But as you go up, so it is going to be taking probably most of them down on the left-hand side. The architect, architect did include, it's different shades of gray. I think the lighter gray is where a new retaining wall would be being added to what's already there. So he tried to use the existing, what was already there, just trying to kind of build it into what's our, what we will be building. So we're going to lose about half of it. If you looked at it, if you looked at the property, there's sort of a little round area, so most of that is going to be gone up to that point.
Okay. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Ken?
So the area to the, to, to left of the lot, that's not even being used, right? Is that where the orange tape is, or there's like an orange?
There was a house there that burned.
Right. There's a...
Oh, okay.
Had a house fire, and yes, and it just got demolished.
So they're not going to complain?
No.
It's very weird.
Um, yeah, it makes sense. Plus, you want to, yeah, you want to maximize what you can for the living space for your mom and stuff. So I understand the situation. So I have no other questions.
Becky?
Okay. So the stairs, so you said there are inside stairs, but there's also outside stairs? Is that for the second means of egress? So you have to have both?
Yes. She keeps telling me how silly it is. But, yeah, there will be a door that goes out the back, and so if for some reason there was a fire in the garage, she could go right out the back and come out. So they need to have a second egress. That's my understanding, according to the law. They needed a second egress.
Okay. And the utilities and everything, maybe through you, Madam Chair, the...
Yes.
Is this separate? Is this part of the new zoning?
Correct. So this would have to...
I need help, then.
So all, the building code doesn't distinguish between accessory dwelling units and regular dwelling. It's just dwelling units. So this requires separate utilities because it's a separate dwelling unit. So they are aware of that.
Okay.
But, yeah, so it would be separate trenching for all your utilities.
And, okay. And is there a size limitation for the ADU?
The maximum of 900 or half of the principal unit, whichever is smaller. This particular case is 794, which is right around 50%, I guess, of the main house. So it was the biggest that they could do by right, or biggest they could do, period.
It's 790, it's 795?
Because it's 50, because it's 50% of the principal unit.
Okay.
The main unit, whatever that square footage is, the gross sport area, the ADU can't be more than 50, can't be more than 50%.
Okay. I didn't do the calculation, but they're saying it's 795, so that's okay?
Yes. The house is...
1,594.
1,894.
A 15.
Square feet.
Okay. Okay, so you're putting all separate utilities in there?
Yes.
And is the garage going to be heated and everything also?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Chris?
I think all of my questions have been answered, other than the fact of, are you going to be able to back out of your garage and turn around and face Locust Street? Or are you going to have the problem of trying to back onto Locust Street if you're coming out of the garage?
With the width of the garage, there should be ample room to back out of the garage and pull out, although I've become very adept at backing into my driveway because we've been living there for 20 years. So, yeah. But, yes, there should be enough room to back out and be able to turn around and go out.
All my questions are been answered.
Okay. Thank you. Actually, I have a question for you, Ms. Zakelli. This is, is this the first case that we've had in front of us for one of those new accessory dwelling? So, but they're as of right, correct?
Yeah, yeah. They're not, yeah, this is, they're just asking for a dimensional requirement. So there are, there will never be an ADU for the use...
Right.
In front of any board.
Right.
It's a protected use. So the idea is that in any residential zone, you can do this, up to 50% or 900, whichever is smaller.
Right.
So if anything, you're, we're only, the reason why they are here is simply due to a dimensional, dimensional relief that they're looking for for the garage.
Right.
The fact that they're putting an ADU there has, should have, shouldn't have to do with the decision. It's a dimensional thing.
All right. And then, so if this was an oversized one, so say it was 900, but that would be more than 50%?
They wouldn't, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be able...
Right. Right, they wouldn't be able to do that at all, correct?
Period, period.
They would have to either reduce it, or they wouldn't be able to do it.
Correct. So there is no way to go over 900 and have it be considered a protected use ADU? What, typically now what this is happening is when there's an existing structure that's already over 900, and they're like, well, I'm not, like, what am I gonna do here? They have to reconfigure things, and sometimes there's no way to reconfigure it, there's just no way you're gonna get a protected use ADU in there. We're finding these to be difficult. Luckily, they're kind of starting from scratch, and they're just asking for dimensional relief based upon the, the squeezing of the lot.
Right. But because it's her mom, if they wanted to, they could have come to us and asked for an EFLA, an oversized one, correct?
But it couldn't be over 750.
Right, right.
So.
Right, so this.
They'd be for a special permit anyway.
Right.
But they decided to instead do the full, so to do an ADU is very, very different from.
Oh, no, absolutely.
So they decided to do, you know, go the fully legit route for, probably for investment purposes and many other purposes, to just do it right.
Right, right. So you can evict your mom and have more access in there, right? Yes, John, you can ask another question.
Yeah, just a follow-up question on this, and I understand Brian's clarification that we're, this here, off, we leave, but since the word ADU came up, I just want to understand, Brian, so there's no avenue that an applicant can apply for a special permit or anything to go above that 50% number? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying, it's, I'm gonna expand a little bit, because there's just been a determination that if, if a city or town does allow a special permit process for an ADU over 900 square feet, then unless you write it into the bylaw, that same property would be able to do a protected use ADU in addition to the special permit. So pretty much no new municipalities are allowing, are allowing that as far as I know. I know a lot of municipalities are cooking up bylaws, so there might be, I, I know there's appetite for some type of a process to go over 900, it's the question of whether the state would consider that a protected use ADU or not. No one, I think, would want to say, yep, everyone can get two ADUs now, because you, once you get one over 900, then, then you could do one under 900. So that has not been determined yet.
But currently, the way.
Currently, nothing.
Currently, the way our bylaw is written, though, there is no avenue for any applicant to go over 900.
Currently, nowhere in Massachusetts.
Nowhere in Massachusetts, okay, and then, back to the EFLA point that Corinne made, they could apply for an EFLA over 750 via a special permit, though, correct? I mean, we've issued plenty of oversized EFLOs, and we're still able to do that, yes?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I had it right. Thank you.
Could I ask?
Yes.
One more question, if you don't mind? Because this is just making my head hurt now, so I, I need to ask, just to find relief. So if someone had an attached EFLA, is there anything that stops them from also applying for a detached ADU?
No, nothing, it's totally by right.
Okay, thanks.
This has come up.
Funny how some of these laws that they pass, they never really think of all the ramifications of them.
Well, Massachusetts, just like, just like many commonwealths, are a collection of cities and towns that don't necessarily talk to each other.
No, 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 absolutely. There aren't that many commonwealths, though, most of them are states. Okay, any other questions? All right, on to deliberations. John, I think, I think I stepped you. John.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this was more of a discussion of understanding ADU from the applicant, but I think it's with the board as well. I, I see this as, you know, I don't, I don't like the side setback, honestly, at such a short distance. I'm really on the fence on this, but I, I do understand it. Feel like the garage could be reduced somewhat, so, I don't know, I guess I'm gonna hold my vote and see how the rest of the ad go with this.
Okay. Kevin, any comments, or?
I think the lot's burdened by the hill that it's built on, it's, so there's, there's some case to be made there, I think. They are, I also don't love the setback, but I think it might even be more than the setback of the garage that it'll be directly next to. I know that what's on the next lot doesn't necessarily matter in the conformance of, of this lot, but it occurs to me that where they're citing the garage, it will bother no one, I think, because it'll just be directly next to another detached garage. Those are, those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Ken.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with John on, you know, I would like to see the size smaller, but in looking at that plan, the only size change I could see that would, would work was to make it not as deep, you know, reduce to 35. So that's not gonna buy us anything on the setback, I don't believe, so I'm okay with this. I'll vote for this.
Ken.
It, it is a misshapen lot, so you don't have a lot, I mean, you don't have room in the front, more in the front, you have to go in the back and do everything, it's sort of triangular. I, I would vote for this, I think it's fine.
Becky.
I, I like the location. It's sort of back-to-back with the other garage, so the only thing that I would consider is if it could be further back, but that hill is so steep, and you're gonna have a challenge as it is, so I think the location is, is fine. I know we're throwing around a lot of terms about EFLA and ADU, and I thought that maybe just to say quickly, EFLA was the zoning law that was passed by the town, and that we've been going by for years, and ADU is the new law that's been passed by the state, which has totally different criteria. So you're going under the new law, the new ADU law, and I think you might be the first person, and.
First person in front of you. First person in front of you, well, for a project, but we have, we have churned out several permits.
You know, the, the goal is to create more housing in Massachusetts, so for the audience that, that they know that, and I would be in favor of this.
Chris.
I like how you have the garage off at an angle, and I don't think it's gonna be completely visible from the street, especially when that other house does get built. And I also don't think, as much as I'd like to see it smaller, shrinking it down to 24 feet, three feet on either side, doesn't really gain much. If I was voting, I would be voting in favor for this. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, yes, I would be in favor of this as well. I kind of agree with John's point, but I also, I also think, you know, that the, the lot is, is a weird lot. You have all of those issues with water runoff and everything kind of up above you on that hill, and where that shed is, is, is kind of very close to where the proposed garage is, so it's not as if you're shoving it all the way over, because you want to have, like, a lot of yard, that's, that's not your, that's not your goal here. And I also agree, you know, the, the garage on the other property is kind of up against the property line as well, so they're kind of back-to-back. So yes, I would be a yes. So, John, we're back to you.
Well, based on my fellow board members' comments, I can see the logic here, so I will vote in favor.
Thank you. Okay, perfect. I have a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to issue a variance under Table 2 of the zoning bylaw to construct a detached structure that is proposed to be located 5 feet from the side property line where 15 feet is required, and that the proposed extension alteration of the use is not substantially more detrimental than the existing structure to the neighborhood. Adjacent properties would not be adversely impacted. The reduced dimensions would not be detrimental to the public good and would not substantially deviate from the intent or purpose of this bylaw.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? So it passes. Good luck.
Thank you very much, thank you.
And thank you, you were very patient tonight.
And I also would like to say that Brian Zakelli was very helpful to us as we were doing the application process, so I'm gonna give you some pause.
I'll take, I'll take it.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Danvers.
Night, Danvers.
See you in July.